You were live.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, February 8th, 7:34 PM, and this is the Grozeal Township Board of Trustees Business Meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We had, we had some technical things we had to deal with. That's why we're a couple of minutes late. Next, additions, deletions to the agenda. And I appear to have both of them. First of all, I'd like to make a motion to delete action item number one. So that it can go back to be further enhanced. Okay. If a support, any questions? I've talked to all of you about this, and just for the TV viewing audience or Zoom audience. We had a lot, a good number of responses for Grozeal. And we, taking those responses into consideration, we're going to go back and continue to add to this ordinance as currently written. And then we'll bring it back for a vote sometime in the future.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
Yeah, would it be fair to say that we had enough public input to indicate that there was support for some role that food trucks could possibly play in the community?
We, we'll, we'll talk, I'll talk, I'll talk about that in my, in my report. Right now, we just want to know if we can take this off the agenda. Got it. Any other comments regarding deleting it? Not hearing any. Again, since we're on Zoom, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, just so we know what's going on. Joe? Yeah, your name?
Yeah.
David?
Hi.
Carl?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Uta?
Hi.
Jamison?
Hi.
And I vote aye. So that'll be deleted. I guess, and after we stopped, I, I just realized we didn't do the, the roll call, which we'll do now. This is what, this is what we're about to do, is what we talked about. It's come about because of the Zoom meetings and not everybody being present. So we have to take a step back here. And I'm going to take a roll call of the board members. Joe?
Yes, from Grozeal Township, Wayne County.
Thank you. David?
Present and I'm attending from Grozeal Township in the state of Michigan.
Thank you. Carl?
Carl Blatcher, trustee, attending by Zoom from Grozeal Township, Wayne County, Michigan.
Mike?
Mike Jurecki, trustee, I'm attending from Grozeal Township, Wayne County, Michigan.
Uta?
I'm Uta O'Connor, township clerk, attending from Grozeal Township, Wayne County, Michigan.
Jamison?
Jamison Jaeger, trustee, and I am present.
Thank you, sir. And this is Jim Budney, supervisor, and I am attending from Grozeal Township, Grozeal, Michigan. All right, we got that out of the way. That'll be something that we will be adding to our agendas. All right, so we went through, we deleted action item number one. With that in mind, I would like to make a motion to add a food truck moratorium resolution.
Support.
Thank you. With, with the fact that we're taking the ordinance back to the table to do some additional work on, we would be faced with shutting down the, the food trucks right now. So I'm asking for this moratorium. So basically, everything stays the way it is today. That's the idea of it. Any comments? Questions? Hearing none. Have a motion to add a food truck moratorium as action item number two.
Are you looking for so moved or a second?
I'm looking for a second.
Second?
And roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uta?
Aye.
And Jamison?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. So we have one, one action item, the moratorium. Now I need approval, motion to approve the consent agenda, I'm sorry, motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'd actually like to propose another action item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to reintroduce trustee Jurecki's action item to hire a bridge engineer after substantial public comment on it pretty much demanding we do so. As written on the last, as written in the last board meeting, I think it was February 25th.
I still support it. Okay, we have a, we have a motion and support comments. I would, I, I'm going to comment, I don't think, I, I don't, I, I wouldn't be for it for the same reasons as before and, and even more so by all the comments that I got from, from the public after our meeting indicating that they thought we, we did the proper thing and not, not passing that. So, other, other comments?
I guess I'll, I'll start my comment.
Okay.
Last month, we said it was too early. We might have been right. Okay, fair enough, but Wayne County has an agreement now. There is a report, there's something for someone to review. And the, the public outcry I've seen has been substantial. Like, people have called me, I've looked at every comment on Facebook about the bridge has been like, why the heck did four people vote against hiring a bridge engineer? In fact, I saved a bunch of them and I actually intended to read some of them later if it comes up for debate. But we're currently, we're currently spending substantial funds on this. It's, it's a worthwhile investment. I mean, we, we spent $25,000 on...
Go ahead, go ahead. Finish your statement.
We've spent $25,000 on substantially less impactful things. This is a worthwhile investment. Now, I'll leave it there, so.
Well, I was going to ask you, you said we've spent a lot of money on this. I haven't, to my knowledge, we haven't spent any money on that.
No, I'm saying the people of Grozeal are hemorrhaging funds every month crossing the free bridge. Me, you, everybody, or the pay bridge. I apologize. Based on the license plate cameras, last month, the discussion washed it to like $15,000 a month. So being able to hold Wayne County accountable to what they say would be a significant move in the right direction. Not to mention, they're saying 20-year, 30-year fix, 10-year fix. I mean, that's, that's, those are significant different periods of time. A 30-year fix, hey, that's great. I can live with a 30-year fix. A 10-year fix, that's going to significantly impact my family, other people with kids and people my age. We'd like the peace of mind that our bridge is going to be fixed and fixed right and not be back down in seven to 10 years.
Other comments?
Yeah, Jamison, you're a little light on the numbers, what it's costing Grozeal too. It's, I'm not sure. Yeah, no, but I think, Mike, when we looked at those numbers, that couple of years could have paid for the, the whole repair what Grozeal's paying. So that's all I just want to let you know on that. Not the...
No, thank you, Joe. I appreciate it.
Other comments?
Yeah, I would just, again, add that I support this. And I think timing is really of the essence. It's, it's not really so much that, you know, we, we, we deny or oppose what they're saying or what they have approved and, you know, how they want to fix it. I, I would do, I, I wouldn't do anything to stop those wheels that are in motion. But like any major project, and this is a major project, you have opportunities along the way, potentially, if you understand what's being done, to maybe offer an improvement. Maybe there could be an opportunity along the way where if the township spent $500,000 to fix some of the peers that maybe aren't scheduled to be fixed, and much lesser cost would give an expert, none of us are experts. I don't think anybody claimed to be an expert on this and thinks so. But maybe give us an opportunity to spend some money, a very low amount of money, and, and make a huge improvement that would, would, you know, be paid for 100 times over by extending the life of the bridge. Okay, it's costing us about $15,000, $15,000 to $18,000 a day in punitive costs. Island, you get in some pretty big numbers pretty quick, millions and millions of dollars a year. But those opportunities come and go. It's like we discussed, we've discussed before that, you know, you, somehow the superstructure folks have to coordinate with the folks repairing the piers. And they have, they'll have an opportunity to do that, maybe simultaneously, or maybe it will have to be done sequentially. But a big prolonged project like this, if you fully understand it, we put ourselves in the best position to have an intelligent discussion amongst Grozeal folks as to maybe there may be an opportunity, and I don't know if there is, I really don't, but for 20 grand, I, I think it'd be well worth it. That's paid for in about a day, right, in bridge tolls. Maybe there may be an opportunity to enhance this thing down the road, again, without stopping the progress, that could add substantial life, but then that opportunity's in the first two months, and it's gone after that. So if you don't get an engineer, we may be kicking ourselves, you know, in the butt, saying, why didn't we do something when we had an opportunity? Well, because we didn't want to spend the $25,000. Well, now we're, may have to spend another six months, 300 million, you know, $3, $3 million for residents or whatever, because we missed that opportunity because we were afraid to spend 25 grand, you know? I think we really, from my perspective, we're not being really good board members by not looking into this. I think, you know, this, we could be wasting a lot of township folks' money. And I'm not saying the county's lying to us. I'm not saying the county, the county's been very professional in everything they've done here. They just could be wrong. And there may be opportunities that we let go by, and they end up costing the residents millions and millions of dollars. And opposed to paying millions and millions of dollars, maybe we just rather pay $500,000 in a tax increase or something to, to, to enhance the, the improvement. So I agree with Jamison. You know my position on this, obviously, along the way, there's inspections, we got to make sure that they're adequate, so on and so forth, but I just, you know, I couldn't stay silent on this. I, I can't stay silent on it because I think we're missing a huge opportunity and be, and my position being negligent. If, if we, if we don't do this and we do miss a big opportunity, then none of us should be here next term. That's how I feel about it.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mike. I think that this is, this is a small amount of money compared to what we spend on many other things that are much less important to people than the bridge they drive across twice a day, every day. Like, our recreation budget dwarfs the amount of money we're willing to spend to hire a bridge engineer and at least try to secure some intelligent understanding of the bridge situation. And I think it's just not prudent to not do so.
If I could add to that, I don't want to duplicate what Mike and Jamison said. So what I'd just like to say is, going on Facebook when I was notified by an individual that texted me and it was flying through there, I have to tell you, I didn't see one individual that said they were pro, do not get it. It just was continuous of why didn't they vote for it? This is what we are looking for. And I think what we have to understand is we get put in this position by the voters. We're a fiduciary of not only to be fiscally responsible for the township, but we're also put by the voters and how much is put to the voters to see what they want from us. And I think there was an overwhelming amount. Again, I, I, if there are, Jim, if you found ones that weren't happy with it, I guess, I, I believe you. But I didn't see one. I didn't see one person on there. And I'm just saying that we are here for the voters. They put us in these positions. And I even think sometimes, and I'm not saying you should be swayed. I think that it's such a, a reasonable expectation that another set of eyes on this can absolutely help our biggest investment that we've ever been a part of. That's what we're saying. And the second part is that what I saw in the people, that, you know, sometimes you got to listen to them. You've got to listen to them to see what the people want that put us in these chairs. So, I said, thanks.
Yeah, I, I, trying to characterize this as if you vote against it or you're not for it, you're, you're against the people. I, I think that's mischaracterizing it. I think it may come down to the same thing it came down last time, not seeing the value in it that, you know, that, that you obviously do. Obviously, Mike does. Obviously, Jamison does. And Joe, I would, I would think you do. But I'm still being involved as I have. I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing the value in it. Uta, you had a, had a, you wanted to say something.
Yeah, I have, it's actually a point of order. When this item, was this item actually voted on as an action item at our last board meeting? Or was it simply, it was voted on as?
It was voted down at our last board meeting.
As an action item or as an add to the agenda?
It was an add.
Yeah.
Yeah, it never became an action item.
It never became an action item. So we just had a point of order that had it been an action item that was voted down, it would have to be reintroduced by somebody who actually voted it down, correct, Tom?
That's correct.
But since it was only not in, voted not to be included on the agenda, we should be okay proceeding.
Okay. Thank you, Uta.
Okay.
Other comments? Carl?
But we still haven't voted to include this on the agenda.
Excuse me?
We are arguing.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, what this is, is, you know, do we, that is the real question, not, not the issue itself, but do we include it? Do we add it as an action item or not? That's the, where the discussion should be.
Exactly. The only thing to be discussed is whether or not to add it to the agenda.
Anything, anybody want to, anybody have anything to add from that standpoint?
From that perspective, it should be added because it should be, it's a big issue. It should be debated and talked about. If, if we can't debate it and talk about it here, then I think just blowing it off and not making an action item is...
Well, Jamison, I, I wish, I wish you'd take, take, watch, watch how you say things. Nobody's blowing anything off here.
Well, if you're not going to let it even be an action item.
Wait a minute. No, Jamison, we're not at that point yet. We haven't voted. Does anybody have anything else to add regarding adding this to the, as an action item? Carl?
Jim, two questions. One, for both you and Derek, if you would, because I understand both of you have been attending the meetings with Wayne County.
Carl, this is to, this is to deal with whether we add it or not, not to discuss the issue.
No, I, I understand that. My question is, is there anything from Wayne County that you would have to add that would impact this decision? It seems to me the, the question is, can we go forward with the information Wayne County is providing, or do we need to have our own engineer? I think that's what the point is making.
Let me, let me give some, just some information. Company that's been awarded this contract has been in business for over 100 years. They work around the world. They, to me, and they specialize in this type of work. I'm, I'm satisfied that the contractor knows what he's doing. They told us that this fix will be somewhere between 20, should last between 20 and 30 years. Is that a guarantee that anything will? I don't think anybody can guarantee it. I, I, you know, I don't think any engineer or any contractor would guarantee 30 years. They're saying this type of, of, of fix should make those peers last 20 to 30 years. That, you know, I don't know, that, how, does that information help you? Carl?
It helps, it helps me, Jim, and that leads to a, a second question. When there was a millage, two mills that was put on about several years ago for the improvement of roads around Grozeal, many of which were...
Carl, I'm gonna, you're, you're going into roads. Let's stay with adding. Are we adding this or are we?
We have one question on the agenda, Carl. It is whether or not to add or not.
That is, will, if, if it gets added, we can have the discussion.
Right.
Okay. The other point is that I think I should make is if we want to have an educated discussion, it's important to add something to the agenda in advance of the meeting and share all the information everybody has received because I think we can all say we've heard from a lot of different people. So keep that in mind. This, this came up as a, a last minute add. And I think there may be board members who are not prepared to have this discussion without added information shared.
Carl, so I'll go back to Carl. Do you have anything else to?
Just, just one quick comment, and that is if we are looking at hiring our own engineer, the succession to that is that we're looking at putting money for the bridge. Is that something that, and Mike has talked about, or Jamison, one mill brings in 600,000. Is the county then going to be rhetorically asking, expecting Grozeal to contribute on an annual basis to that bridge? That's my question.
Okay, Carl, that isn't, not appropriate to this discussion.
That's fine.
I'm just saying, this is a massive issue. The only way we get to talk about it's an action item. It was brought up last month. I brought up the exact same thing as last month, so we can just flip into last month's agenda and look at it. And it matters enough that if we can't talk about it right now, we should talk about it as an action item. And that's all I'm saying. I think the people of Grozeal deserve a fair shake and that this should be discussed about by their elected representatives if we can't talk about it right now.
But it has been discussed once already.
That we can add this to the...
No, it was never an action item. It was only...
No, it wasn't, but it was discussed.
And everybody can share the information that they've received from their constituencies. But I would say today, we do not have that information and it will just be he said, she said. And so if we want to have this discussion, we should add it to the agenda for the next township board meeting and everybody share the information that they have.
I'll ask people to email us.
Other comments?
That would be appropriate, Jamison.
Other comments? Hearing none? A motion to add action item to hire a, a bridge engineer for Grozeal to to, that's the motion. We want to add that. We want to add that. You're seconding it, Mike?
Yeah. If you're, if you're, are you making the motion?
I'll make, I'll, I'll, I'll consider that made, making.
I second your motion, Jim.
Okay, you're seconding it? All right, we'll go through. Joe?
Yes.
David?
Who?
Carl?
No.
Uh, Mike?
Yes.
Uta?
No.
Jamison?
Yes.
And I vote no also. The motion does not pass. It will not be added.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
I'd like to make sure that, and Mr. Frill, you know, I'd like to add this as an item to our next township board agenda.
At this point, Uta, we don't know if we can. We have to look at what else is on there. I understand, we understand from the discussion that this is an item that some people want to talk about some more. And if it doesn't get on that meeting, it'll get on the next meeting. I mean, we'll get it in there if they want to do it. Uh, and if they, you know, wanna, wanna set it up.
I mean, but she just made a motion for us to add it to the next meeting.
No, I did not make a motion.
She, she doesn't, and you don't make, you don't make a motion, Jameson, to add it to the next agenda.
No, no, I just made a suggestion.
Okay.
We understand there are people, you know, that want this on there, and it will be taken into consideration. Moving along, uh, uh, okay, moving along now, uh, motion, uh, to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? The agenda as amended is approved. All right. Now we go into brief public comment on anything on the agenda. If you would, three minutes, you know, the, the, how this works, three minutes, please give your name and the address of where you live. Uh, and, uh, this, where is Brian? There he is. If you can hang on just one minute, guys, before we take any questions.
Uta, are we gonna dock his pay for leaving the meeting?
He's muted.
Pennies on the hour.
Have a motion?
Thank you for that. Uh, all right, uh, comments on the agenda. Name and address where you live. Uh, go ahead, uh, Brian.
Okay, if anyone has any comments, just give me a wave and let me know and we'll get you on. Okay, hold on. All right, Mr. Flavin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great. Um, this evening I'd like to, uh, put this out. Uh, my request this evening is regarding the police union arbitration with Grozeal Township that's been going on for a number of years. In July of last year, the former supervisor stated that the arbitration with the police union would cost the township taxpayers six point two million dollars. Trustee Bletcher stated that the cost to the township would be seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars or something around there.
Mr., Mr. Flavin, Mr. Flavin, your comments are supposed to be on items that are on the agenda. The union, the union, uh, litigation is not on the agenda.
My question was, or my understanding was that we could ask any questions now at the beginning of the meeting.
That, uh, anything, any comment, not ask questions, any comment you have on the agenda.
So my question or my comments can be made later in the meeting?
The, the comments later in the meeting are on action items. Your comment now is on agenda items.
Didn't we flip that so that they could make any comment at the beginning of the meeting?
He's asking, when can he give his opinion on anything, Jim? Is that not correct?
Right now. He can give his, he can give his opinion on anything on the agenda.
No, on, no, he, he's asking, when can he give his opinion on?
I know what he's saying. I know what you're saying, Joe. I'm saying it's, it is comments on the agenda.
I, I get that. When can he give, he's just asked, when can he give his opinion on anything at this meeting? At what point of this meeting is what he's lastly asked?
Right now.
You're saying on the agenda, Jim. We're saying it's an open forum. No, we voted like a meeting or two ago to make the beginning of the meeting an open forum.
No, it was, it was, it, the way.
Can you correct us on this?
Correct, yeah. Uda, can you cor, Uda? Uda?
I seem to recall.
Which, yeah, I, and, and maybe I'm mistaken, but I thought it was on the agenda.
At our last board meeting, we had public comment at the beginning of the meeting on any item.
Any item, period?
I think we made the motion to, we used to do it where you only commented on the agenda or action items at the beginning of the meeting and any item at the end of the meeting.
Was action.
In.
Was action.
No, yeah, okay, okay.
Flip that.
Okay, what it, okay, I understand. That's fine, Mr. Flavin. You can give your comments now.
I think you guys used up all my minutes.
Well, you know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you have three more.
Thank you very much. Let me, let me just, I'll, I'll, so basically what I'm asking is that the union, uh, or the contract, uh, and where I left off was, uh, trustee Bletcher said that the township would, it would cost the township roughly seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars to, uh, with the police union. And the police union said that it would cost approximately forty thousand dollars to work this issue out. And considering that the police union contract is due to be renegotiated next year, I believe taxpayers would appreciate a written explanation of how these wildly different figures were calculated. I also believe the township manager mentioned that the current budget shortfall for this coming fiscal year is a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, which is very similar to the cost of attorney's fees to litigate the arbitration last year. Uh, some kind of gap accounting analysis would help clear the confusion, uh, I believe. And I would hope that we could have some kind of, uh, clear this issue up once and for all. And just as an aside, I, uh, as a taxpayer and a bridge user, I really think that the idea of hiring somebody, uh, that's on our side to help us, the township, uh, figure out what's going on makes a lot of sense, and I support that idea fully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flavin.
Okay, do we have any other comments? I'm seeing none.
Seeing none? No.
No, I'm sorry, Greg Carmison just.
Okay.
Go ahead, Greg.
Okay, uh, Greg Carmison, uh, I wanted to make a comment.
Greg, name and address, please.
Oh, okay, our, uh, property owner, Grozeal.
No, no, name and address where you live.
Yeah, okay, taxpayer two one two two eight East River Road.
No, no, that's not.
That is correct. That's actually correct. But if you want to know where I, I sleep night, okay?
Oh.
Three eight three one zero Saddle Lane, Clinton Township, Michigan, okay?
Thank you.
You can be a, you can be a property owner and a tax, a homeowner.
Mr. Carmison, that's not the issue. I just, I asked you for information and I just wanted you to give it. That's all.
I understand. It would be good, because my reading of the Michigan Open Meetings Act is that you have to pass a resolution to clarify exactly what address you're asking for, but that's another issue. I just want to make a couple of quick comments here. Uh, I've listened to the discussion about the bridge engineer and, uh, I listened to the Wayne County Commission meeting last week. And I do have some questions that I believe are unresolved and some, uh, discrepancies that have occurred in media reports. Um, and this would be the kind of thing that a, a bridge engineer, I think, would, would be qualified to address. So just to give you a sampling of, of the types of questions that I have, that other people I know have. Uh, number one, what is the complete list of all repairs on the Wayne, Wayne County's consulting engineers have recommended for the Wayne County Parkway Bridge to maximize safety and service life? How many of these repairs will actually be accomplished by the Brennan contract during twenty twenty-one? Two, if the Brennan contract only includes repairing six of the eleven support peers that Wayne County's consulting engineers rated in fair to poor condition needing maintenance, how will this limited fix affect safety and service life of the bridge? Can these other five support peers be fixed after the bridge reopens the vehicle traffic without negatively affecting vehicle traffic flow on the bridge? Three, the News Herald, uh, reported that the Michigan Department of Transportation Chief Bridge Engineer has stated the bridge can only be repaired to extend the service life for about ten more years. While senior Wayne County officials have said it can be fixed for twenty to thirty years of additional use, why is there apparently a discrepancy between opinions of MDOT and Wayne County officials about the expected longevity of the bridge? And four, during twenty twenty, when Wayne County officials rejected contractor bids on repairs to the bridge because the prices were too high, did Wayne County officials consider the cost of Grozeal residents and businesses paying toll fares for two years instead of just one year? That's just a sampling of the kind of questions that, that I have and that I've heard many other, uh, islanders, uh, talk about. My, uh, final comment is on the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, recently announced that, uh, the Corps of Engineers is seeking public comment on the establishment of a restoration advisory board for the Naval Air Station on Grozeal. According to the Army Corps, a restoration advisory board is a stakeholder group that meets regularly to discuss, share information and participate in environmental restoration process for a specific property. I think the, uh, idea of establishing this organization is smart and prudent action for Grozeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Um, I would, the, I just, uh, if you listen to the meeting, you know that the county is going to have a town hall. Uh, the contractor will be there, uh, to talk to the, uh, talk to the public about the bridge. Uh, in, probably in March, I would strongly suggest that you and anyone else that has questions on the bridge not be there. Uh, anybody else?
Okay, Judy Maiga.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Um, I missed most of the discussion on the bridge and I'm sorry about that. Two four six five five Lafayette is my address. My name is Judy Maiga, M A I G A. Um, personally, I'm not on board with a hundred thousand dollars right off the bat, considering if you hire an engineer and they say, Wayne County, what you're doing is wrong. And Wayne County says, you know what? Too bad. It's our bridge. We're doing this. Then what do we do? We spent a hundred thousand dollars for nothing. If we investigate if other townships or cities have done the same and they've had good results, hiring a private engineer to analyze a county project, then I would say it may be worth it, but that's my two cents on that issue. Um, thank you very much for the Hopes for Handcuffs program. Very excited to hear that that is beginning. Um, and also I would like to request that when in-person meetings resume for the, um, township board, that if you could continue to have a Zoom option combined with it, that might be amazing. Um, and because there's gonna be a lot of people who are not comfortable coming out in public, even when it is okay. Uh, myself being one of them. Um, I haven't, I don't know when I'm gonna be able to get my vaccine, so I'm not going into groups and um, being able to see the live meeting and have a, an ability to comment through Zoom through a computer in the room or something would be an awesome thing if that could be discussed. And lastly, um, Grozeal Citizens for Justice and Change are here. We are active. Um, you may have seen some of our signs around town for Black History Month and, um, Martin Luther King Junior Day. Um, we are meeting monthly. If anybody is interested, we are on Facebook, Grozeal Citizens for Justice and Change. We have some exciting things coming up in the next couple of months, and we'd love to have you join us. So that's all. Thank you.
Judy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Greg Pilkington.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Greg Pilkington, uh, South Point. Um, a, a couple of comments having to do with the bridge and bridges on Grozeal. Um, I think public activism is a great thing and a powerful tool of affirmation, uh, in the case of the Trenton Channel Bridge. Uh, but this action was being taken at the direction of the Wayne County Executive, who, uh, has administrative oversight of the Department of Public Services, which includes roads and bridges. Uh, that action and that contract was set in stone. It's been affect, Commissioner Pelamara asked about it at the transportation uh, meeting on January twenty-sixth, uh, wondering where it was. There is, and I guess my point is this, there's no more effective advocate on behalf of the interests of Grozeal Township with Wayne County, with the state of Michigan, any other body than you, our elected board. And to that and understanding the processes, the processes for funding, for evaluating, for assessing and waiting, uh, whether or not a Trenton Channel Bridge or any other bridge on Grozeal should be funded and addressed with urgency, uh, is it's incumbent, it's incumbent that you have that education or have a commission, uh, that is chartered with that responsibility. Uh, because there are differences with each one of the bridges that we got. Uh, and I'm happy about this funding. Uh, but ultimately, our board needs to take greater ownership and invest more time in advocacy and oversight and audit of what is going on with these processes. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, do we have another public comment?
Um, Brian, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Angela Secocas.
Hi, everybody. Angela Secocas, um, East River, we're here, uh, just south of you all. Um, I wanted to, um, just commend the airport commission quickly. I've spent a little bit of time in the last couple of weeks over at Island Athletics, and I think that, um, they're continually changing and updating the space. And I think it's amazing and a great add, especially um, right now when we all want to be so close to home. So I just want to take a few minutes and recognize that. Um, I did tune in a little bit late to the meeting, so it's my understanding that the food truck discussions pulled off the agenda, which I just want to also say, I think that's a wise choice, and I would, um, ask that the board take a look at the food truck ordinance, how it's written, and look at it more from a planning perspective. I think, um, it would be a great benefit, of great benefit to consult the planning commission, and I think look at it overall, um, from a business perspective. We have, um, you know, I understand businesses on McComb and other businesses that may not be, um, happy with how it's written or how, um, how, you know, other trucks are allowed in and out. But then we have other businesses such as Airport Inn that have yet to, um, open or attempt to open in the midst of, you know, everything that we have going on. So we also need to look at it from a residential perspective, so. And I would just want to offer, um, on a volunteer basis, I would come in and, um, I'd love to meet with, um, anybody who's interested in my experiences um, with the food trucks and the DDA and, um, working in, in and around the airport, um, uh, space that is currently being leased by Glindos and, uh, some of the, a lot of the research that I have done over the last couple of years and how other communities have made it work. So I just wanted to throw that out there and, um, say hello to everybody tonight, and I, um, appreciate the time.
Thanks, thanks, Angela. By the way, the chair of the planning commission sits on the, is part of that work group that's putting this together. So the planning commission's deeply involved in this ordinance.
And I, and I appreciate that, Jim. I, I'm aware of that. I, I think it'd be great to get a couple of the members of the planning commission involved, but I think that's a good move.
We have, we have the chair, uh, you know, we have five or six people on there, which is plenty for a work group. Uh, and, uh, and I'll talk about this more in my report, but yeah, we, uh, you know, we, we listened to the, we asked for comments. We got them and we're taking it back to incorporate those comments.
Awesome.
Um, anybody else?
I am not seeing anybody. I think we are ready to move to consent agenda.
All right. Mr. Native, the consent agenda, please.
He's muted. Dave, you're muted.
Wake up there, David.
I am, I am. Uh, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda twenty dash zero six nine, which includes minutes of the January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting of the board and check registers dated through February fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Second?
Okay, so we have, uh, any question? Okay, so we have, any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. We have a motion to approve Consent Agenda 20-069, which includes the minutes of January 25th and the check register dated through February 5th to 2021. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Hearing none, consent agenda passes. Thank you. Now for our, our action item. We took the food truck ordinance off. By taking it off, we wanted to, I wanted to get, basically have everything stay status quo until we got the food truck ordinance back. And thus, we want the resolution that we have would would do, would allow everything to stay as it is. So the motion is for the Township Board to approve the attached resolution, which all of you have, to impose a moratorium regarding food trucks until March 8th, 2021. Within your packet, your resolution reads, I believe, March 12th. If you would change that to March 8th.
Mr. Supervisor, you'll have to read the resolution, I believe.
Mr. Assorti.
Oh, Madam Clerk, we, I discussed that with the supervisor. I'm comfortable with the resolution. The boards had the resolution. It was made available. It's out there. There's no need to read it word for word.
Okay.
I need a support.
Or?
Thank you. Questions? And again, this basically leaves everything the way it is. So we can go back, revise our proposed ordinance, and bring it back for a vote.
That's what I was going to ask you, Jim, just to explain that so you don't get phone calls.
Yes, and that, and that was if we didn't, we would be saying, starting tomorrow, no food trucks.
Right, right.
This, this just leaves everything the way it is.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah. Jim, I have a question. It's Mike.
Yes, Mike.
It's roughly thirty days. Do you think that's going to be enough? I mean, you've got a lot of tentacles on this thing that you have to wrestle with. I'm fine with the, you know, the resolution, but it seems like it's a lot that has to be done in a pretty short period of time. Is it realistic?
Well, I think it's realistic. I, I, you know, it depends on us really getting the work group together. And, you know, I'll be talking to Derek tomorrow. And, and if not, we'll extend it. If Jim. This is something that, you know, doesn't, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to be pressed by that and say, hey, you know, okay, the month is up or the thirty days is up. And so, no, we'll, we'll extend it if we need to. And I will talk to Derek tomorrow. Tentatively, I'm looking at probably the seventeenth to try to get the group together. That's when Brian's coming into the office next. So that's kind of what my game plan was with that. So hopefully, to Jim's point, we can solve this thing. You know, get talking about it sooner than later. Yeah, we're not, we're not, so everybody knows, we're not, we're not going to be starting from scratch here. We're taking basically the ordinance, the proposed ordinance we had, and we're adding to it. So, I mean, that's, that's the direction that the, you know, I think the people that responded gave us, and that's what we'll do. Other comments? Not hearing any. Roll call vote. To approve the motion for the board to approve the attached resolution to impose a moratorium regarding the food truck until March 8th, 2021. Start with you, Mr. Nadeau.
Aye.
Mr. Bletcher.
Aye.
Mr. Yeager.
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor. Mr. Jurecki.
Aye.
Mr. Porzarelli.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. Motion passes. So we have to get going on our, we will get going on that, on that ordinance and try and get something. Okay, that was.
Quick question. It was asked of me to ask, do you foresee that we'll have a public forum on this at all before taking this further as an ordinance?
No, I do not.
Is this the kind of an ordinance that can be approved without a public hearing?
Approved by us, Mr. Assorti. We will take it. When I say that is with us, it will follow its proper procedure. This is not one and done by us. It has to follow everything that has to be done. So, so we won't hold that, but yes, there will be the public comment.
Okay.
Yes. So, yeah, I'm glad, thank you for, for saying that because people could be mixed up with that.
Yeah.
Okay. We have our reports, starting with the Clerk's report.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Short and sweet today. Things are going as normal in the Clerk's office. There is no Planning Commission meeting this month, but there, there may be one in March. Again, depending on the progress with the planners and the clients on the Pirates Cove Storage Facility at the airport. And there is a Fire Commission meeting on Thursday. It'll be on Zoom. And that's Thursday, February 11th at 6:00 PM. And that's it for the Clerk's report.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Mr. Nadeau.
Thank you. From the Treasurer's Office, a reminder that winter property taxes are due February 16th without penalty. You can drop your payment off in one of the two drop boxes outside of Township Hall. After a three percent penalty is added to any unpaid winter taxes after that date. On March 1st, all unpaid 2020 taxes become delinquent and must be paid to Wayne County, to the Wayne County Treasurer. Again, if you, and if you cannot pay your winter taxes by February 16th, there is a deferment available for those who qualify. And applications are available in the Treasurer's section of the Groseal website, groseal.com. And, well, DPS, our DPS meeting is tomorrow, so there's no report for tonight. And no report from the Rec Department, Rec Commission. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, David. We'll move on to the trustees' reports. Jamison, start with you.
Okay, the Zoning Board of Appeals was unable to meet this month because it could not establish a quorum. I looked into that, and then I asked if the lack of a zoning board meeting would create a significant hardship for the complainants, and I'm waiting to find out about that. And I have nothing else significant to report at this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bletcher.
I have the pleasure of sitting on two Commissions, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission as well as Greenways Open Space. The report for both is simply that we are working on budgets for the 2021, 2022 budget year. And BPAC is still waiting here for a response on the wealth Wilson grant application. And that concludes my report.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Bletcher. Mr. Jurecki.
All righty. No new numbers for this meeting, but we do have a new employee, fully trained dispatcher, Jamie Linden, who will be starting or have her training complete tomorrow and be able to provide some much-needed overtime relief for the three other dispatchers. We will probably have a update both on the deer call and the deer count, probably the first part of March. And things are going well. And next meeting for the Police Commission would be 217. So that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Uda, go ahead.
Yeah, Mike, I thought you were going to introduce another new employee in the Police Department, Officer Atlas.
No, I wasn't aware of that.
I'm sorry. Last week, I'm, I am sorry. I didn't mean to catch you off guard. Last week, the Clerk's Office was asked to swear in a canine officer along with his human counterparts. And we had the honor of onboarding Officer Atlas. And I, I'm not prepared to show a picture.
But I'd love, I'd love to see Officer Atlas. I haven't met, we haven't met.
He is a German Shepherd, bred for duty, comes out of the Czech Republic, and, and and I'm blanking on the officer's name, which I am so embarrassed at.
Canterbury?
Herico.
Oh, no.
Herico. Thank you, thank you, Joe.
I didn't know the dog was in service though yet.
Well, he's sworn in, so I imagine he's getting ready.
Geez, I thought, and I thought the only thing I was neglecting is the bridge. So, apologies. I won't make that mistake again. Thank you.
Oh, no. Again, I, I am sorry that you, that I caught you off guard on that. That was not my intent.
I don't believe, I don't believe he's in service yet, Mike.
He's not in service yet? I see Officer Pelland on the call.
All right, all right. Let's not get off base here. Anything, Mike, do you have anything?
To get used to.
Mike, do you have anything else?
I don't. No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
I sit on the airport Commerce Park Commission. Their meetings are third Monday of the month, and unfortunately, I have no report this month.
Okay, thank you very much. Township Attorney.
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, just to report that the prosecution of the Groseal Township ordinance continuing through the 33rd District Court via Zoom, all of those matters are continued to be handled. That we're not seeing any sense that that's going to end anytime soon. And quite honestly, there doesn't need, doesn't appear to be any reason that they should at this particular point. And other than that, I'm looking forward to the Open Meetings Act meeting on February 24th. And I wasn't going to say this, but I, I am anyway. I thank God it wasn't asked for a legal opinion on how you swear in a canine, because I don't know of it. Anyway, thank you. That's all.
She's always treated me unfairly.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Ream.
Mr. Supervisor. I have a few brief items report to the board in the community. Township Hall staff is back full-time. However, we still are closed to the public and open by appointment only. Based on the governor's order, if you can work remotely, they are requiring that, but we are kind of created a hybrid, if, if you will. So, but the drop box is open in the front for payments. But feel free to call for an appointment if you have something more complicated than just making a, a, a simple payment. And next Monday, I believe it's the fifteenth, is President's Day. Township Hall will be closed. And our next Township Board meeting is February 22nd.
Thank you. Thanks, Dale. Appreciate that. My report. Well, first I have to start with what my boss gave me, Margie, because she'll be down on me if I don't do it. Assessment notices for your taxes were put in the mail today. The March Board of Review will be held on March 8th and 9th, with evening appointments on the 9th. People may schedule appointments once they receive their assessment notices. And assessment notices contain the instructions on how to make an appointment. She also wanted me to mention that the, the really cold temperatures that we have now do not necessarily make the ice on the river and canal safe yet. I believe we had somebody, we had some four-wheelers out there that went through the ice. So be very, very careful if, if you're going to go out on the ice to make sure it's safe. The other two things I did want to mention, and, and a lot of you know that the Wayne County Commission passed unanimously the funding of the repairs to the bridge last Thursday. It was nice to see. I was happy to see that it was unanimous, and there were no, no negative comments regarding it. All of the Commission members seemed to be for it. So the money is there. The contract's been signed with the J.F. Brennan Company, Inc., out of La Crosse, Wisconsin. The, as I, as I said earlier, that company's been in business for over a hundred years. It does work around the world. So I think we're, I think we're in, you know, I would think that we're in pretty good shape with them, that they know what they're doing. They specialize in this type of work, and I think, I think we're going to get the work done as well as it can be done. We will be having our weekly meeting with Wayne County Wednesday. The, I do believe the contractor will be part of that weekly meeting now. And so we'll be getting more information regarding the how and why they're going to do what they do. To Greg Carmazan's comment earlier about more information, that will be forthcoming. Probably the best part of what they said, besides the fact that they were giving, giving, giving us the okay and the money to do the work, was that the scheduled work is to begin in April, and the anticipated completion date will be the end of September. So the bridge should open around the first of October rather than the first of December. So we, not only is it, you know, we're, we're going to get it, not only is it going to get done in 2021, but it's going to get done a little sooner than, than we thought, which we'll all be happy with. The other thing I did want to talk about was the, the food truck ordinance and why it was taken off. First of all, currently, our ordinances do not provide for food trucks, period. And I know there was a lot of, lot of discussion, a lot of things going on on social media saying the township's trying to stop food trucks, when in fact, we're trying to put an ordinance together to allow food trucks. I, I, I was, I was somewhat dismayed in some of the comments that we got because the people weren't properly informed as to what was going on. Having said that, we got a very good response for Groseal. A very good response to the question regarding food trucks. We had eighty-four people respond. Ten of the responses were either, either didn't get into whether they wanted or didn't want food trucks. Or, as there were two other responses, didn't want food trucks. So the overwhelming number of people that responded did want them. Some people responded regarding regulating them. Some responded regarding not regulating them. Most of the responses were merely, we like food trucks. We like the Lindos. We like this. We like that. But the response was there that the food Uh, but, uh, the response was there that the food trucks are a favorite with a, a good number of residents. And thus, we're taking the ordinance back to add to it, to make it more liberal than what it was first written. So, uh, we will have to look at permitting fees. We will look at how many trucks per week. We will look at where they're going to be. Those things, uh, will be added to the ordinance. So I, I just wanted, I wanted to thank, first of all, thank the, the residents that did respond. As I say, eighty-four out of ten thousand doesn't sound like a lot, but for Grozeal, uh, that is a lot. So thank you very much for responding to that. And that is my report. With that, uh, we will open it up to public comment on the action item, which was the moratorium that was passed.
Hey, Jim, I have a quick question. How did they submit comment for the food trucks? I missed how you captured that.
Hey, I'm sorry?
How did you collect comment for the food trucks? I missed how you captured that.
Uh, they sent me, they sent emails to me.
Okay, all right, cool.
Yep. So, and, and, uh, you know, there's talk about having the open forum, which is fine, but here we actually had them documented. Uh, and I, I actually spent Saturday going through and putting them in the different categories. Uh, and I was very pleased to see that many, because we normally don't get that kind of response. With that, any, any, any comment on the action item? Seen Mr. Freel's face? It seems like there aren't any.
Nope.
With that, with that, we are going to go into closed session. The way this will work on Zoom, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. When, when we go into closed session, everybody that isn't going into closed session will be, I, I don't know if you, what, what is the procedure? What do you do?
Basically, I'm, basically, I'm throwing everybody out of.
You're throwing everybody out. Okay. So, uh, those of you that don't get thrown out, you're gonna be in the closed session. So I need a motion.
Mr. Supervisor, just to remind you that you should have a roll call vote on this.
I understand that, Mr. Assorti. I am aware of that.
And one more thing, when we, we have to have a motion to adjourn the regular meeting to go into closed session, correct? And then.
Not to, not to adjourn the meet, you don't adjourn the meeting till after you come back.
Pause, pause the meeting.
You're, 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 you're doing a, you're doing a motion to go in, go from open session to closed session.
Okay, and then.
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
I make a motion that we go into a closed session to discuss, uh, management, retiree, healthcare, legal opinion.
Second.
And it's been seconded. I need a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Naidoo.
Yes.
Mr. Bletcher.
Yes.
Mr. Jurecki.
He's muted.
Mr. Jurecki. Doing a motion to go.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Yeager.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Porzarelli.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We will go into closed session.
Yeah, just give me one second.
All right.